Good evening. Welcome to the Olentangie Board of Education Regular Meeting. We're in the Berlin Room. Mrs. Hatfield, will you please call the roll? Mr. Bartz?
Here.
Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Present.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Mrs. Hatfield? Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you. I am pleased to welcome members of the Olentangie STEM Academy. They had an exhibit at the Ohio School Boards Association Capital Conference, and they will be doing a presentation. Please welcome Kristin. You know what? I'm not even gonna mess up the name. Come on.
You can introduce her.
Come on, Karen. Okay, are we working yet?
Oh.
He's good. There you go. Okay, perfect. Hello and good evening. I am Karen Sidoti, the principal of Olentangie Academy for our STEM and ACT programs. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight along with one of my teachers and two of our four STEM students. We're hoping the other two will show up. One had a bowling commitment, so he's probably on his way. And then the other student, we're just hoping she gets here too. So back in November, we attended the Student Achievement Fair at the OSBA Capital Conference. Our students did a phenomenal job showcasing their projects to conference attendees and students alike. Tonight, we are here to share the experience. Before our students speak, I would like to introduce Ms. Brooke Kelly, who teaches Biology and Junior Medical Interventions at STEM. She will talk briefly about STEM's Genius Hour, which is one of the hallmarks of the STEM program and the catalyst to students' personalized learning.
Hi, I'm Brooke Kelly. So our idea for Genius Hour is we borrowed the idea from Google. Google allows their employees to spend 20% of their time at work to work on anything that they're passionate about. And so we can't give them 20% of their time at school to work on anything. But we do give them one hour a week, maybe 45 minutes sometimes. But we give them one time a week where they can study whatever they want. So it's not, it doesn't have to be related to biology, although some of them are. But most of ours fall into four categories: entrepreneurship or community service, engineering group, an inquiry group where most of our scientific experiments are, and a coding group or computer science. So we will start with Kristin. Or I can, do you want me to describe what Ife did?
We'll see if she gives her B M and M.
We'll start with Kristin. She's one of our juniors in our biomedical program.
Hi, Kristin.
Hi. How are you? My name's Kristin. I studied the difference between using hand sanitizer and washing your hands after using the restroom because I was very, I'm very interested in microbiology as a career. So I, when I, what I did was I just took samples from people's hands before and after they used hand sanitizer and then tested the difference between bacterial colonies that grew. And I found that sanitizer was not as effective as washing your hands. But I did only have a sample size of three, so it wasn't super, super good. But like, you know, I did my best, so.
What's your plan this year?
I, well, my plans this year, I'm just gonna go through the biomed program, and then afterwards, I'm gonna go to college for microbiology.
Nice. Are you gonna continue your study?
Hopefully, I'm going to try to do the science fair, but I haven't come up with like an extension of my project yet.
Thank you. And next is Andre.
So hello. My name is Andre Faranazzo. And for, for my time, for my experiment, I actually had the chance to go to the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair for my project analyzing the impact of velocity on mass for projectile and energy usage in that process. The goal of the experiment was to design a more efficient hyperloop system. So the hyperloop is actually a supersonic trainway proposed between San Francisco and Los Angeles. And unfortunately, they have a scaling problem. Currently, they don't have a good way to accommodate a huge number of passengers, the amount that they want to in order to be profitable. So my project analyzed how they could do that using technology that connects and disconnects pods. That's it.
Oh, my gosh. That's pretty complex. And you managed to do that in 45 hours a week? Or you did a lot on your own time?
Forty-five minutes. So unfortunately, I was a, they had kind of, for juniors, they don't really have Genius Hour, unfortunately. But I definitely wanted to do the fair. So I decided to take that project on on my own.
And have you presented it to the?
Yeah, I've presented it a lot, quite a few times. But most recently, it was at that fair in Pittsburgh, and that was a lot of fun.
And so what you have determined is it could work the way you, the way you think?
So.
Using pods?
Let me explain that a little bit. It's essentially, the concept is their technology is suited really well for low passenger volumes. They can send several pods individually really well. If there's like 1,000 people using it per hour, they don't have a problem. But there becomes a problem when the amount of distance they have with each of these launches or these pods gets smaller and smaller because they're just continually putting more and more into the system. So I designed something that will calculate how many pods can connect. And then it figures out, all right, based on this mass, it's gonna have to go this fast. And then it just sends it in. And then it figures out, this is the much, this is the distance it needs. But it's really, really, it's really adjustable in terms of how many people it can accommodate because it's not sending it like, all right, we got 100 people. I don't have to send three pods, and they don't have to be like 10 miles apart. I can just send them all in one group. So that was kind of the concept that I designed. And I just recently finished a prototype for it for the Google science for this year, but that's a whole nother thing.
Oh, my gosh.
So what's the energy? And what is it? Is it done on magnetics? Is it done through, what's the, what's the source that pushes the pod from A to B?
It's maglev. So they're called linear synchronous motors. Basically, what, if you can imagine a fan, it's the exact same thing, except it's laid out. It's the same concept of creating an imbalance for magnetics. Like, if you've got one side that's got more pressure than the other, you're immediately gonna cause it to move. So that's how it, that's how it actually moves. But the challenge with my experiment was like figuring out how to simulate a vacuum because this thing is supposed to be in almost a vacuum chamber. That was probably, that was a real pain, actually, to do. But yeah.
And what made you get involved in this, in that particular project? Like, did you read something and then it just triggered your mind? Did you go some?
So I'll be honest. Elon Musk, the guy who conceptualized the project and published a document about it, has always been a hero of mine. And when I heard that our school was having a district science fair, I was like, I gotta do something related to that. So I'd always, I had an air cannon lying around, and I ended up.
Because we do. Because we do.
It was from years ago, but yeah, I hadn't used it in a long time. I tested it, I tested it with lighter versus heavier projectiles, and I realized the difference in their speeds wasn't nearly what I expected. So I thought, maybe, maybe the relationship isn't proportional like I used to think. And I ended up, that's what test, that's what caused me to look into, what is, what is the impact of mass on the energy usage of whatever the vehicle is that it's, like, that is being tested? And from that, I was able to figure out, my original conclusion was bigger pods are more efficient. And that's why trains are designed the way they are. They're not fast, but they carry a lot. And the reason is because it's way more efficient to carry more than it is to go faster in terms of freight. So the experiment that I designed figured out, all right, there's gotta be a balance here because they have to go faster than whatever is traditionally used for transportation. But they have to be really cheap, too. Like, they have to find the best of both worlds. They have to be balanced there. And I found out that if they can move it at least 560 miles an hour, and they can carry, and they can have ticket costs as low as $20. Now, this is a 350 mile trip that normally costs at least 50 by airplane, so that's a really good price reduction. Then they can disrupt enough of the market to be profitable over the long term. And if they wanna do that, they're gonna have to move up to 10,000 people in a single hour. So my project, I'm not gonna say that it necessarily gets it to that level, but it definitely gets it better than what it is now.
So even at that ticket, even at that ticket price with that infrastructure investment, you believe that that can, they can get a ticket price down?
Yeah, I think that's really their best chance to reduce that price because their, their system is really well-equipped for high prices, low volume. It's perfect for that, actually. And that's why they're designing it the way they are in Dubai, in Abu Dhabi. Like, that's their very first track that's supposed to be operational because they're the only people that are willing to pay for just how expensive this thing is. But if they wanna make this public transit, they're probably gonna have to consider modular connection between pods instead of launching them separately if they wanna, if they have the concerns of users at heart, like, safety-wise, at least.
Okay, so what do you do after high school?
Yeah.
I've, I'm really passionate about entrepreneurship and business. So I kind of look, like I mentioned, economics-wise. I love STEM, and I love to build things, too. But entrepreneurship is where I see myself. Like, I see myself owning a company in the future. Yeah.
Wow. I see the next Steve Jobs.
Yeah, you need, you need to go to the V C side on, on the sciences. Maybe Elon Musk. My company does work for SpaceX, so maybe we can talk afterwards.
For, for the record, the picture that he had up there with Andre explaining to me for.
How lost were you?
An extended period of time. And also Mrs. Davis in the other picture. For the record, we have no idea what he's talking about.
Mr. Rafe actually awake in that picture?
I'm paying very attention. I have a, I have a question for Kristin. So Kristin, you said biomed, you wanna do, do you wanna do research? Or is that what you're looking at, research side, or?
Well, I wanna, I wanna go into college for microbiology, but afterwards, I wanna work in public health microbiology, like, working for the CDC.
Oh, good.
That's outstanding.
Well, if you do more research on hand sanitizer, which I cannot stand because it dries out your hands and smells weird. And I think, if you're looking for an extension, does it actually break down the natural?
Oils? But not oils, but your ability, your immunity. Like, the immune system?
Yeah. Does it do that? Because I have heard that.
Well, I did actually research that. And when you use hand sanitizer that has at least 60 to 70% alcohol in it, then it shouldn't cause your, the bacteria on your hands to become immune to it. It's when you have hand sanitizer that doesn't have any alcohol content in it that those bacteria become immune to it.
Oh, I did not know that. Thank you.
Yes. We learned something.
Yeah. I can use it if it has alcohol.
Yes. Another student.
Hi. So I am Ife, and I did a project with Python and Raspberry Pi. So I basically did a pie piano that's using a keyboard, but as like a piano keyboard, that when you press a key, and it will have like the piano sounds come out. So like, I did research that like a lot of people really like music, but they don't know how to play an instrument, but they really want to have fun at home by their own time. So they're like, so I was thinking like, we should have something that may help them. So I think that it would be really cool to have like, to have this project, which will like, when they're at home, they can have fun and do like whatever they want to do. Like, this can play like a simple song out of this pie piano. But also, this could be have like more advanced because this only have two scales of music key sounds. So I think like, if it's need more development, it honestly like need more scale on it. But the keyboard is limited because it only have like, it doesn't have much key as the piano does. And I know that piano is quite hard to learn. Like, for the music, you have to recognize all the, like, the little dots that you guys know. Yeah. And piano, you have to memorize all the, like, the sounds, the keys. So like, not like everybody would have like that memorized that much, really. So I think this would be really good. And like keyboard, we know that it has like letters, print, letters playing on, print on the keyboard. So like, you could know that where is the key at. So that's like the advantage of the keyboard. So I think it would be really good to have like the sound of the piano key printed on the keyboard.
Ah. The sound of the key? Like, if it was C or G sharp or whatever you put on, you put it onto the keyboard?
Yes, I used Python to code like which key, when I press a key, the sound will come out like by like different kinds. So like, I list out all like the key sounds on piano that I really want because those are like the main keys that you probably honestly really used. So it's pretty useful, I guess.
Yeah. Do you play the piano?
Yes, I do.
You do. How long have you played?
Like seven, eight years.
Yeah.
Does, are the sounds different if you're on a keyboard and you go to capital letters or lowercase?
Well, you could, you could program it, but for now, we're just only using as the keyboard. So we don't really have like a capitalized or lowercase. Yeah.
She programmed the whole program on a Raspberry Pi, which is basically a mini computer. So she wrote the whole code for it.
Wow.
Computer code to do it. As a freshman.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Never heard of a Raspberry Pi.
Yeah.
I haven't.
Delicious. Are you able to, have you been able then to compose? Have you made any compositions since you program? Musical composition that you've been able to play back to test? I mean, is that what you use to test the ability of the programming of the keys in the program?
So the keyboard, it's not that as fast as you play the piano. It need like time to reflect this, like, the sound back. So like, it obviously have like time, like.
There's a lag?
Yeah. So in this one, only need to like, you have to like press the enter to have the sound come out, which is like, this is the advantage for this part. So like, yeah, like maybe need to like have not only using the enter, but just press the key and the sound will come out. This would be like better.
So what do you hope to do after high school?
That's a good question. I don't really know.
She's a freshman, right?
I know.
It goes fast, though.
Well, so do you wanna pursue computers, technology, or music? Or are you, do you wanna do both?
I don't know.
Don't know? All right. That's the right answer for a sophomore.
Interesting, everything.
Yes.
Also the right answer. Great. Thank you.
Okay. And then I'll, I'll tell you about Andrew. Andrew Holycross is our fourth student that was selected. He's a very talented athlete. He's a baseball player with Liberty High School. So, on the varsity team. And he wanted to create a training device so that he could practice hitting more consistently at home. And so what he did is he made a 3D-printed, basically, holder that goes on his baseball bat. So you can see it right in the picture. It has Velcro straps so that it can be adjusted for any baseball bat. And he designed this in SolidWorks, which is a computer design program. And then he 3D-printed it at our school. And it holds a tennis ball. Tennis balls are more flexible than a baseball, so that's why he had that. And also, I think, being in a neighborhood in Powell, he couldn't really crank a baseball. But a tennis ball's okay. So he was a big hit at OSBA because everyone wanted to try out his baseball bat. But yeah, these are just some of the projects that come out of Genius Hour and some of the skills that the kids learn just by exploring things that they really enjoy, so.
Essentially, the way it works, and you see, you know, Todd Nider, you're practicing the baseball thing.
He needs some work.
Is that the trajectory of the ball, however the ball is released, it will tell you the kind of torque or turn that you're bringing around with the bat. So if the ball goes in a certain way, you're swinging with the bat as opposed to the bat coming around first and then bringing the power through your waist to take the ball where it needs to go. So he kind of figured this out. And through a 3D printer, was able to come up with, you know, this design that I know Mr. Rafe actually talked to about having patented this yet, but what are you doing with this? So he was a real hit because it was real interesting. He was just sort of standing around the conference with this bat and this apparatus attached to it. People were like, oh, my gosh, like, what is that?
So is the golf club next?
Yeah.
Maybe.
I asked him, too, like, how much he improved his batting average. And I think it was like 40 points. Yeah, he did say, he did say he improved. So again, I am so sorry that we went over the time, but I hope you appreciated hearing about these students. I mean, they are, they're brilliant. I mean, they are doing so many great things. So we appreciate the opportunity to share this experience. We thank you for your continued support of the STEM program. We are so very proud of these students and how well they represented the district as well as the program as we live out the mission to facilitate maximum learning for every student. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. And what, what a good way to spend 45 minutes instead of on social media. There we go. And this last picture, this was actually really nice, too. We received an award from the District State, State Board Member, Dr. Antoinette Miranda. So she came and personally awarded our students this. So, thank you.
That's very nice.
Yep. And I think.
Great. Thank you.
During the OSBA conference, I just wanted to give you guys a compliment, too, because I think all of the students did an excellent job explaining their projects. As Mr. Rafe said, that we were kind of looking at them a little, like confused. But they did an excellent job, not in just in their research, but in articulating what their projects were. So well done. It was really fun to hang out and get to see what they were up to. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to the Board President's Report. I'll be brief. We have a busy agenda tonight. I wanted to give a special call out to Rob Griffiths for hosting Alex Sheen. And he gave a presentation. He is the founder of a nonprofit organization called Because I Said I Would. And that's probably about the best hour I've spent in the last several months. It was truly inspiring to see what, what Alex did is he, he lost his father to cancer. And when he delivered his eulogy, he came up with a card. And he said, my dad wasn't an overly remarkable individual, but he did always hold his promise. And that is one of the things that we're missing today in society is people say they'll get to it or whatever. And he made another statement that stuck with me that was, you can say that you stand behind something, especially on a computer. You can say you support it, you can say you stand behind it, but to show up is a different story. So that was, that was really refreshing. I have cards, if you would like a Because I Said. So what you do is you fill out a card, it's blank, and that is your promise. And you can give it to somebody. And when you fulfill your promise, they give it back to you. But he said the ways that these cards have been used is truly inspiring. One lady like keeps one on her phone because she promises to not text and drive, so she can't pick it up because the card covers it. And the stories went on and on. The kids were very engaged. They, they were so well-behaved, and they sat there. You could see some of them getting a little fidgety because they didn't wanna cry in front of their friends, I'm sure. Some of the stories he shared were very moving. But that was a lovely opportunity. I hope at some point, the other members of our district, all, all students could see his presentation. And he is a graduate, 2003, of Olentangie High School, so. Also, this week, I attended the State Board of Education meeting. I had never attended one of those before. Very different than ours. There were so many, I couldn't even count how many board members there are. And they were all standing up and walking around and coming in and going out. But I guess if you have a meeting that's two days long, that happens. I attended a presentation on literacy. And the states, you know, the state average is about 64% of our students, third grade, eighth grade, and one, I can't remember if it was 12th grade, are only, are proficient in reading, which to me is failure. And we just got our reading scores, which are excellent. So job well done to our teachers for taking literacy as serious as they have. And that's all I have to say tonight. Mr. Rafe, your superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And good evening. Good evening to everyone in attendance. It's always nice to have, have a crowd. Welcome. So I always like to start with some of the good things going on in our district or examples of how we're living our mission. As you know, many of our schools have already been recognized by the Ohio Department of Education as being Purple Star Schools, Purple Star designation. Was awarded to schools that show an outstanding commitment to serving military students and families. So we've recently been informed that three additional schools, Orange Middle, Wind Out Run, and Berkshire Middle School have been awarded that designation. As we continue down this path, I see in short order that all of our schools will have earned that designation from the Ohio Department of Education. So, and as always, having two current and one future child in the military, I'm certainly appreciative of those efforts. So I'd like to take this opportunity to highlight our upcoming ONE Community Conference. It's the fifth ONE Community Conference we'll, we'll be hosting, February 2nd at Berlin High School. The event's gonna have a multitude of keynote speakers and workshops. Last year, we had 350 people in attendance, and we are shooting for well over that number. So we started to market the ONE Community Conference. And that is, again, geared at our efforts towards inclusive excellence. As you know, we had a Teacher Professional Development Day on the Monday after Thanksgiving holiday, November 26th. I really wanna make sure I compliment our curriculum team for the work they do to organize, train our teachers, our principals, and our staff to lead these professional development sessions. They're just, everyone is, I tell our staff and all of our staff meetings that Emily and I do, we don't, I don't think we can do a better job of the core functions of teaching. The work we do with curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and our staff's commitment to the professional development necessary to continually get better at their craft is, is a huge reason for our success. So I'm just very proud of the work we continue in that area. We did, we've had two events in the past month dealing with how we are focused on supporting our students. Walnut Creek Elementary School hosted a screening of the movie Angst, and, which is about raising awareness around anxiety. And our Parents Program team hosted a session for parents on dealing with stress and anxiety in students. And again, that continues to be a focus of our Non-Academic Barriers to Learning Initiative. And again, Alicia Barant and her team are very proud of the work they continue to do in that area. And then finally, as Mindy mentioned, our third grade results are in for our 2018 Fall Third Grade Reading Test, or Test for English Language Arts. And the promotion scores for the Third Grade Reading Guarantee. As of October, when that test was administered, 70% of our students in the third grade are proficient or better. That number's down slightly from past years, which is, but not, nothing significant. So, you know, that's in line. Our promotion, the Met Promotion Score is at 90%. As you know, they keep raising that number. So we're, you know, we're in good shape there. We do collect data on comparison districts in the area. So we got data from 10 other districts, and our proficient or better and Met Promotion Scores are, are the highest of the 11 districts we have recorded. So, you know, we'll continue to work to make sure that all of our third graders are meeting that promotion score. that promotion score. So... And then finally, we have... It's just so hard to believe we're already at the winter break. It's amazing, you know? Second quarter's over, year's half over. Classes do resume January 7th. Our next board meeting is January 10th, so I will take this opportunity to announce that we are moving our start time for that meeting to 6:30 PM.
We are.
And then, that's the rest of January.
Much appreciated, for those of us who have to...
Yes, coming from downtown. That's right. So, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mrs. Hapfield, the Treasurer's Report, please.
Yes, good evening. So, I wanted to give you an update on several projects that our department has been working on. We have completed our biometric screenings for the staff. Those were complete around the 15th of November, and we are compiling the results as we speak. We'll have meetings with Mount Carmel over the next couple of weeks to discuss those outcomes and results, and continue to program or set programming for our wellness initiatives to kind of help folks with some of those key components that may have come up in those screenings. And we've also completed our open enrollment for insurance. This was the first full enrollment that we used our electronic enrollment program. And by and large, we had great feedback from our staff in terms of ease of use and being able to log in, get their information in the system, and then have it reported directly to our vendors. We will have the results of the compilation of the open enrollment within the next week or two, so we'll present those results and have a better update on finals in January for you. And then finally, our audit team has nearly completed their fiscal year 2018 review. It's been a long time coming, but we anticipate that the results will be public here within the next few weeks. They've got an item that they're waiting on from an outside source. Prelimarily, we have no concerns, but the official report will be released at that time. And then we are just working with Delaware and Franklin Counties to collect valuations for tax year 2018. We will be looking at and getting the rates, the effective millage rates, within the next few weeks to get that established for our next calendar year. So, we'll focus on that and what those results will be in conjunction with the valuations, so that we can put that information into the forecasting update, along with our enrollment, which will help drive our staffing projections for the next update. And then, in the next month or two, we will start working on budgets with our departments and buildings. We'll issue their templates and start the compilation process, and working with our finance and audit committee to review that, and then build the five-year forecast from there. So, lots of things that are starting. We also have our calendar year-end reporting that our department will be working on. So, 1095s, W2s, all of those reports will be completed here within the next few weeks of the month. And then in terms of board action items, or action items on the agenda for the Treasurer's Office, we have a couple of things. We have our October financials, amended appropriations, minutes from the October 24th meeting, donations, and a depository agreement with First Commonwealth Bank. For the financial statements, there are two items that I would point out or just want to review or discuss. We are slightly ahead of where our assumptions were for the operating... Other operating revenue, and that's due to our interest-earned income. As you may or may not be aware, the market interest rates are starting to rise, so we're actually seeing higher income from those investments, which is a positive for the district. And then we also are slightly ahead of our purchased services, but that's really just related to a timing issue. We had budgeted the new phone system as a monthly charge when it was really a one-time charge. So, by the time we get to the end of the fiscal year, we'll land right where we thought we would be. The amended appropriations or minutes are just to be in compliance with ORC regulations. Nothing of note to point out there. And then for donations, we would like to recognize the following donations, please. We had $5,500 to purchase View Sonic Boards by Johnny Cake Corners PTO for Johnny Cake Corners Elementary. Projector and lights valued at over $1,000 by the Liberty Tree Elementary PTO for Liberty Tree School. Just over $3,000 for assistance boys' basketball coach at Liberty High School from the Liberty Athletic Boosters. And then two donations of seven... Just over $700 and $2,300 for a part-time bowling coach at Orange High, and halftime boys' assistant basketball coach at Orange High from the Orange Athletic Boosters. So, we wanted to say thank you for those donations, and to all of our individuals and community supporters who volunteer their time and efforts in our buildings and for our support organizations. We really appreciate all of those. And finally, we have our depository agreement, and this is an updated agreement with First Commonwealth. It's our main banking institution for the district, and this is to extend our contract or services through December of 2023. Previously, we have brought forward contracts from our banking institutions that dealt with the Ohio Pool Collateral System updated that goes through the state of Ohio now, where the banks have to verify that they have enough collateral on hand to support the deposits that they receive. But this is to actually extend our services for our daily checking and operations that we run with First Commonwealth. We've been very happy with their services. They provide their services at a marketable rate, and they also offer support things at no cost, such as HSA accounts to our staff for free, with no charges to the staff for those accounts. So, we really appreciate their partnership and want to continue our work with them. So, we have a contract renewal on the agenda for that. It was a lot of information, and I felt like I talked really fast. I apologize. Are there any questions that you have about any of that information?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hapfield, do we have any public participation?
We do, yes. We have one public participation item that was turned in from Shira Ikorn... Shira, excuse me. I apologize for the mispronunciation. If you would like to come up to the podium. May I remind you, if you don't mind, that the participations or participants are scheduled for five minutes per board policy.
And for the record, would you mind stating your name and address for the... Before you begin your presentation, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My name is Shira Ikorn. I live at 161 Tilladry, Powell, Ohio. Good evening. I'm a Liberty Township trustee, but I'm not presenting on behalf of the board, so I wanted to make that clear before I began. As stated on your website, the safety of students and staff is a top priority within the Olentangie local schools, and the district makes every effort to be prepared in case of an emergency. The district worked with representatives from local law enforcement agencies and fire departments to develop a plan that includes emergency contact information and procedures for handling crisis situations like lockdowns, natural disasters, chemical spills, bomb threats, missing students, and strangers in the building. Beyond your website, you have hired a safety director, school resource officers, and established a safety committee. Knowing how serious you take this responsibility is why I have come before you tonight. Currently, there is a proposal being discussed among the county commissioners and the Liberty Township Board to replace our township fire-based EMS with county EMS. Although you do not have voting powers over this matter, it will have significant impact on the safety and well-being of all of your students, and especially in eight schools: Tyler Run, Sciota Ridge, Wyandotte Run, Liberty Tree, Indian Springs, Liberty Middle School, Hyatt Middle School, and Liberty High School. There are many issues with the county proposal, but today I will focus on how it will lead to eliminating our cross-trained medics, increase response times, and decrease our level of services. So, under the county proposal, our cross-trained medics will be replaced with EMS-only medics. So, let's take a moment and look at how this reduction service will impact the safety and well-being of those in your schools. If there is a fire, our cross-trained medics are able to gear up, enter the building, and begin search and rescue. County EMS cannot. If there is a hazardous material spill in a science lab, our cross-trained medics will enter the building wearing their self-controlled breathing apparatus and begin working on those affected. County medics would have to wait for the firefighters to go into the building, bringing the victims out before administering care. A third example is if we have an active-aggressor situation in our schools, and God forbid, knock on wood. Our Liberty Township Fire Department cross-trained medics, in collaboration with the Powell Police, Delaware County Sheriff's Office, and Olentangie local schools, who have conducted several simulations and training courses, and will be ready to respond. They have the training and the gear to go into the situation and begin providing medical care to those that need it. The county medics are not equipped to do that. My next discussion point is increase in response times. Although the county EMS would be housed in our two local stations, and they would be driving our current medic trucks, there's a lot of discussion of county EMS implementing the closest dispatch... Closest truck dispatch system. Under today's system, if there is a Level 1 or a Level 2 emergency, the caller will get the closest truck no matter what. However, if the AVL system is implemented, no matter the level of the emergency, the closest truck will be sent. And that sounds like a fantastic idea, but it is not, because what can happen is our medics can be pushed further and further away from the township for hours at a time. This year, we have a four-and-a-half-minute average from dispatch to being on scene at your schools, and have responded to these eight Liberty Township Powell schools 46 times in 2018. Response times are crucial. If there's a life-threatening allergic reaction situation, or a cardiac issue, or a student choking, seconds do matter. My third discussion point is a decrease in level of services. In the proposal, the county will provide us two man medics. We usually staff with three. On December 3rd, we had our medical director, Dr. Warren Yamrick, who is also the head of the Riverside Methodist Hospital ER, along with many others from the medical and safety fields, testify what everyone already knew. Two is a downgrade from three. Under this proposal, if a third medic is needed, they will be pulling a Liberty Township Fire Department firefighter to assist them. Now, if there's a fire at one of your schools at the same time, we are now down a fire truck because of manpower. So, this proposal packs the level of not only your medical care, it also has ramifications on the fire side. Since this proposal came to light, there has been an overwhelming outpour of opposition regarding moving forward with the county proposal, so much so that the Powell City Council, on behalf of their 15,000 residents, unanimously passed a resolution in support of the current model. This was completely out of the norm, but they knew it was the right thing to do. A few years ago, I felt it was important for Liberty Township Fire Department to become more involved with the active-aggressor planning and training. So, I had a meeting with Olentangie local school officials, and requested that we have a seat at the table on this critical issue. I was thankful that everyone agreed. So, today, I'm asking the school board to pass a similar resolution as to Powell City Council, or to please make a formal request, asking for your seat at the table regarding this proposal, since it has such tremendous impact on those you protect. This is not about anybody's political beliefs. This is about everyone demonstrating that the safety of the students and staff is a top priority within the Olentangie local schools, and that everyone is making every effort to be prepared in case of emergency. There is Liberty Township firefighter/paramedic Brock here tonight to field any questions you may have regarding our current active-aggressor response procedures and medical care or firefighting. And I do know he also brought the gear to show which our medics have, that the county EMS medics would not. Thank you for your time.
That was very fast.
I tried, I'm sorry. I was looking, she said I have one minute, so I was trying to roll through it.
Can I speak?
Yes, absolutely.
I appreciate everybody coming tonight. As a resident of Delaware County, I reside in Orange Township. And after reading the Fitch Report, I'm in favor of keeping the EMS service as is, because we have the similar service in Orange Township. Even after reading the Fitch Report, it states on page 57 of the 84-page report, "There is no pressing public or political mandate for change." So, I don't understand why this is coming forward. The taxpayers of Liberty Township have voted overwhelmingly for this service, and also during my study of this issue, I can't find the answer to this question. How much money does combining the EMS service actually save the individual living in Liberty Township? If I can tell my taxpayers that a levy is going to cost them X amount of dollars on 100,000 valuation, why cannot anybody tell the people of Liberty Township how much money is going to be saved? That's, you know, a concern, but then, I don't think anyone really knows this answer. But I would ask, is the savings really worth someone's life? Now, that being said, as a school board member, I can support making a formal request for a seat at a table regarding this proposal, as long as the county and the township officials actively participate as well.
I agree. I mean, I am an Orange Township resident as well. I absolutely believe you guys are being taken on a Missouri vote ride with this. So, certainly my personal support outside of the board, absolutely, and I agree, you know, we should provide someone with a seat at the table.
I am a City of Powell resident, and very appreciative of all your efforts. As I stated early, you can stand behind something, but showing up is different, and Powell is showing up for this. It is a matter near and dear to the heart, and we are not in the resolution business, but I would like us to have a seat at the table, and I would like our Director of Safety to be that seat at the table.
I agree as well. I'm a Berlins Township resident, but I've kind of watched this issue emerge and have kind of some of the similar questions you have, what problem we're trying to solve. The county really just responded to a request from a couple trustees.
I'm sorry, I don't think that's your...
Didn't the county proposal just come from a request from the trustees?
I think it depends on who you ask on that issue, but yes, there was two trustees...
It wasn't clear to me how it all got started.
Yeah, there was two trustees that asked after the Fitch Report was released to have them come in, answer questions, and do the proposal. So, I think it just depends on who you ask.
So, similarly, I support, you know, keeping services as they are. As Julie mentioned, taxpayers overwhelmingly supported that level of service, so what's the mandate for change? And I think a seat at the table makes total sense.
It does directly affect our students, you know, in the unfortunate event that we need them to visit our schools. And they do, for the 86th time in 2018, so, thank you.
Well, I don't want to put any words in your mouth, so I want to make sure that I understand what you are saying. So, are you saying that you want me to go back and say that you would like to see the table? Will you be sending a letter saying if there's further discussions, you would like your safety officer to attend? I just want to make sure that I have a clear understanding.
Well, I think that we have to determine... I think we'll probably leave it to Mr. Rafe and the DLT to determine who the best person is. I mean, Joe Swazi, that's how you pronounce his name?
Yeah.
With the security background, that's his business now. It makes the most sense that maybe he's the right person. But we do want... I guess we are saying, we want that...
Yes.
Mr. Rafe to get a name to you, I guess.
You want a letter to the...
Shira, or something that says who that person is.
Liberty Township?
Yeah, a letter to the trustees, probably requesting if you would be doing that, so I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth. I want to have your clear communication.
No, that's fair. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for taking... Letting me take the time. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts. We appreciate you coming and getting the word out, and if anybody figures out how much money is going to be saved, I'd appreciate it.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't really matter.
Right. Well, they're saying that it's saving money, but nobody knows how much.
I think...
The downside of hiring consultants.
Do you guys have questions about what we carry?
I totally believe that you have the best service that there is available. And I appreciate you bringing all of that, and I... I'm glad that you have it, you know?
If you guys have questions, that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
So, I made sure I brought everything that we're going to carry with us into the scene. So, if you guys have questions, you guys can look at it, if you'd like to put it on. I'm happy to dress it up.
No. Not today.
Everybody wants to be dressed in the home of our house.
Yeah.
Mr. Rafe should probably...
Yeah, well, Mr. Rafe can put it on. We'll let him do that.
Military, yeah.
So, if you guys have questions up here, if you don't have questions, I'll sit back down, and you guys can perform with your...
I appreciate you coming and bringing it, and I am sure you have the best equipment available, and that's what I want in my schools. Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
For the investment of your time.
Yes.
Yes, it is a big investment. Okay. Discussion items. Okay, well, tonight, on tonight's agenda, we have two discussion items. Our first presentation will be from Bob Lamb. He's with Delaware County Economic Development.
Before that, you can also tell the folks they don't have to hang out if they don't want to, but hold on, Bob.
Right, Bob. If you would like to...
You can all stay if you want.
We love having people attend.
You do not have to feel obligated.
If you want to hear about...
It's completely up to you.
Yeah. And this is really interesting, because it's going to talk about roads that'll impact us.
But, so, do not... We still love you anyways, don't we?
Yes. And we'll be following you on Facebook.
Thank you, Shira.
Thanks for your patience, Bob. We didn't want your presentation interrupted.
No, thank you very much. Thank you for having here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity back in front of you. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce the developers that are here today with the Evans Farm Project, and also Lee Bodnar, Orange Township Administrator. So, very happy to have him in the room. Both the projects I spoke to about the other week ago, about two weeks ago, are located in Orange Township. And also, from our office is Nick Adams. He's an intern working with us. He is at Ohio Wesleyan right now. So, appreciate that, and thank you again for the time today. I'd also like to thank both Mark and Emily for their help in moving this item forward. We've been working on these two projects for several years now, and very excited to be here tonight, to be at this point, to see if we can secure your support to go forward with these endeavors. The funds that would be generated from these two TIF agreements, both TIF agreements are 20-year, 75% TIFs that are in front of you, will mostly be used for transportation improvement projects that are located within the Olentangie School District. I previously went through those different projects. Happy to answer any questions on those again tonight, or to re-go through those slides. I'll leave that up to the board's request, though. I don't want to repeat the same material to you if there's not a need to do so. I think there were several items that we received from Emily and Mark that they wanted us to look at as we proposed this agreement. We addressed each of those requests. One of them was to make sure that the funds remained within the district. We added that language. We also added language so that the Shanahan Overpass project would begin in 2024, in the planning stage and engineering drawing phase of that, and then also changing the compensation agreement to include the dedication of 20 acres from the developer to the Olentangie School District, not just as land, but as a shovel-ready site. So, I believe that we've addressed everything that was raised throughout this process, and I'm hoping that tonight we can receive your support on these two TIF agreements.
I just want to make a comment. We had the presentation last night at... We had the presentation last night at the Delaware Area Career Center, and there weren't any, you know, concerns, or, you know, anybody had any red flags that went up. And just to remind people that we are not giving up any current tax revenue. You know, that, we're not giving, like I said last night, we're not writing Bob a check tonight, you know? So I want people to be clear about that. What we're doing is taking future revenues and putting them into infrastructure that our school district is going to be using. And so I think that is important for people to understand.
Thank you very much. And the other point that I made two weeks ago, and again last night, was that both these projects create a win-win scenario for the community. These were areas of land that we're looking at solely residential development going forward previously, and now we've been able to work with the developers and the landowners to bring commercial uses forward on those sites. And these are commercial TIFs, only affecting the commercial area of development and not the single-family residents.
Right. Yes, because even though some of it does impact Evans Farm, it's the commercial area of Evans Farm that we are talking about. And these pieces of land were going to be, before the recession, they were going to be cobblestone, a residential community, which meant more homes, which meant more kids. So bringing more commercial properties...
We like kids.
Well, yeah, we like kids.
Love kids.
It's the money that we don't get to educate the kids that we don't like. Yes, exactly. So, you know, anytime we can bring commercial property value into the district, we're ahead. Because right now, everything is zone agricultural, and so you don't get that much money off of the land, anyway.
And I have had residents say, can't you stop the developers from putting up more houses? No, we cannot. But we can work with the local, in the county, to ensure that we have more businesses and industrial, commercial land that does generate tax revenue and has something other than houses. That's what we can do.
And it's for the infrastructure, right? So it's, we can't let the building get ahead of the infrastructure, then you have traffic issues, then you've got all kinds of issues that become problematic. We've got to make sure that we're supporting the infrastructure to support the growth, to support the development. So I think it's very important.
And we do want people to stay in Delaware County, because they all leave to go to work, and we want jobs here, and we...
I would love to work here.
Yes, wouldn't it be nice?
We are doing everything we can to make that possible.
The other thing I want to point out with the Evans Farm representatives here is, I greatly appreciate the donation of the land for a future school. And I say "future school" because we will use the land. We just got those enrollment, we just did the enrollment report last month. We will use the land, we just don't know at what point, you know, down... It'll be used soon. It may not be the next school, but it will be used, it could be the next, next school. We haven't decided yet.
Need a lot of schools. So it'll get used for school.
I will add to that. I appreciate the fact that the mutual agreement for the 20-acre transfer, agreed upon development of that 20 acres. I like the language of that, and I appreciate it mutually been decided.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, for your time. Mr. Gordon, welcome. And you will be presenting our five-year capital improvement plan.
Yes, is that time for the update again?
Get a little stat.
Just two. Yeah, just two. I'll wait for the papers to go around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Just to start, I just want to remind everybody, the change in format that we instituted last year was that we added the bond-funded projects at the top of the page, and that was just to kind of help lay out where our bond, the funds from our last bond package fall. And what happens is those fall off, and we move those repairs, replacements into PI. As you can see at the top of the page, the school bus replacement schedule, 2019 through 2021, we still have $898,000 each year in there for those buses. When it comes to 2022 and 2023, the buses and the other items in the bond fall off below that. Those are the items that we specifically had placed in the last bond package we approved for infrastructure repairs and replacements of buses. You can see in there, yes, sir.
So roughly how many buses does...
I believe that is 10 buses. 10 buses. And then you see that we have some membrane roofing at Olentangie High School in Shanahan is, and replacements a couple of years out. Then you see underneath, complete roof replacements. That lines out at zero. And that's an item that as we get further along, when we start discussions further, we'll talk about future roof replacements and HVAC replacements, because those are the items that really start to escalate beyond the funding and the planning stages that we have below, that we'll talk about in the PI funds. Down below in PI, a couple of things I want to point out to start off with is, again, we talked about in 2022 and 2023, how some of those items fell off the map as the bond dropped. It has an impact to the PI down below. And what you see there is, if you look across the technology, we have 1.9 million scheduled for technology for the first three years. Well, that's an item, assuming that once the buses drop off in 2022 and 2023, we still have a need to replace buses. So once that happens, assuming more funding through bond or some other way, that then drops into the PI fund, which then drops, it impacts the areas down below. And one of them is the technology budget, and then you see just below technology, it's bus replacements, that 898,000 drops into that line. So we start replacing buses out of PI, because we don't have a choice once that bond dollars drop off. The other area that it really impacts, and it impacts several down below, but the biggest one is asphalt. We've had many discussions about asphalt, and that's the area that we seem to rob from from time to time, and we have other projects come up. And that's another one, because technology and the asphalt is the two biggest areas in the PI budget. So we start looking at where we have to make cuts at, those are always the first couple that we touch. As well as the other lines down, you can see all of those decrease, there are many of them decrease in one way or another as we go lower down the board. So a couple notable projects coming up as we track down, we always have tracks and some tennis court work going on. One item I talked about when I presented in October, we had some money left over from the 2018 PI. And so I had moved 60,000 of that forward and shared at the time that we've got several windows in some of our, a couple of our older buildings, Wyandotte Run, Olentangie High School, a couple others where we've had some window replacements. We're going to look at a pretty large window replacement starting this summer. And that's really, again, the age of our buildings, we're hitting that point where the windows and door frames and some of that stuff that's been in there for 20, 25 years is, you know, starting to fail, that we have to start replacing.
So Jeff, you start replacing windows, same time we're doing House Bill 264 stuff, how do you know what's driving the savings?
Well, the windows, I get your point, but you're...
You replace the window, it should be a more efficient window.
And it, correct. It should be a more...
It's lower energy use.
It should.
It should be a more efficient window, but we're not changing windows across the board in a building. So we have, you know, 20 windows in one building, we've got another 10 in another, and then a handful scattered throughout. So it won't be that we're doing a full window change in a building. But you're right, that will impact, because presumably they will be more airtight just purely by being newer windows, and given that the ones we have are failing, that is part of the issue, is the air coming in. But we're also at the point we can't delay changing those windows. So...
Did you cover technology?
Yeah.
So what are we getting for $1.9 million?
I think that Mr. Rafe, there may be future information coming on technology on that.
Yeah, I'd like to understand that.
Jack and Rob are preparing a five-year strategic plan for technology moving forward. It's network infrastructure, bandwidth, devices, but that'll be all detailed, laid out, as we continue to move that forward.
We wanted to include it here, because it's coming out of those PI funds, and then they'll report on that separately.
That's an opportunity for me to give it to the DLT, I think I told you so, because that was a question I asked them. Exactly.
Know your audio.
Exactly. Boys, ladies, gentlemen.
So to finish funding the windows as well, as the interior finishes down below, I moved money out of that, and I brought it up. And the reason I do that, even though that money had been in interior finishes, I'm sorry, exterior finishes before, when we have items that may come to you as a bid, when we spend $100,000 on windows, that's likely to be one chunk that will have to come up for bids. So I like to itemize that stuff, so when you guys get that bid coming in, you're familiar with it, and you know it was coming. So that's why I separated that out of the exterior finishes for you. Nope, sorry. The other big one on here that we've been pulling money in, some of that residual from, left over from our previous couple of years, is the bus garage expansion. And it's really not an expansion, I should say, it's an addition of a hub at Shanahan. So where we previously had our bus garage, we plan to bring about 50 buses in the end back there. The gravel base and the, you know, for the buses is there, it's been there, it's held up. We still have some electric in place, we're plugging the buses in. So we'll look at upgrading that, checking those connections, as well as put in some building or renovate to allow bus drivers a place for restrooms and to rest in between routes, as well as a small office. So we're still working on what that's going to look like at the end, but we have been knowing it was coming, trying to set money aside as we've had residual money at the end of the PI year. And of course, our favorite, asphalt and concrete.
Just happy to see it's not the largest number on the page.
Well, you know, it's one of those, and I won't harp on it too much, but I mentioned earlier, it's one of the ones that gets robbed. And remember, we did that original PI projection, that 20-year, that's been about five years ago, but part of that was pictures of, okay, here's, in having the district built out, we had buildings that are eight years old, nine years old, all the way up to, I think, almost 20 years old. And so I provided some pictures of that report to show what asphalt looked like at 10 years old, 12 years old, 15 years old. And that's really what we're getting. When we spend less, we move out in those pictures, you know, what we get for 15-year-old asphalt is what we live with and what... And those are the things that we do want. We want to live with 15-year-old asphalt, but roofs that don't leak. So that's really where we start looking at adjusting some of these up. And if asphalt does, it gets a little more wear, but our priority is definitely roofs and, you know, keeping our mechanicals, so that our buildings are warm and we're not getting roof leaks and those type of things. So if there's something that has to give, that's the one that needs to, because we just go a little slower in the parking lots and, you know, and so... Going down through, the other thing that we've added to the bottom of this, which will be of interest, and this is, when we finish the year, each time, the last couple of years, we've had some residual, where we haven't spent out that money. We've said that if we don't have to spend the money, we won't spend the money. If, as we're getting older and older, it's more of a need to do that, and then we've talked about that going into residual. So what you have at the bottom in the green is the PI reserve funds. And that first number, the 912, that is the residual funds we've carried forward, plus the expected residual from 2019, from what we budgeted versus what we expect to collect. And then under each line going forward, 2020, 2021, that is the expected difference between what we think we will collect, a budget amount for collecting, what we budgeted to spend. So you can see where we are each year, and then at the bottom, there's a PI reserve and the balance, what we expect to be at on a reserve of about 1.2 million in 2023. So we added that on there, so that, again, we talk about money left over, move it into that reserve, and you can see that as we move forward, what happens with that reserve money.
So the PI mill, is it always a bill? Or is it, could the bill shrink?
Does it roll back? It has an effective rate.
Right. An effective rate, so it falls.
It will move.
We've seen it move slightly. It hasn't been drastic in the last year. It's been, you know, like .02, .03, or whatever that might be. It's not a drastic change, but it can change. And so the reserve balance that we have, to Jeff's point, listed in 2020 through 2023 is an estimate, where we think we're going to be. We'll have, again, we'll have another full collection coming in in January to take another look at our estimations, where if we've collected what we thought we would, and then we can, you know, those numbers will be more fluid, like the five-year forecast, than they have been in the past, because with bond dollars or with the residual funds that we previously had, it was a total amount that we were spending down. So we had a fixed pool of money and then just spent it as we went. With the PI funds from the levy, it'll fluctuate. So we'll see more fluctuation in those numbers as we do with the forecast versus a fixed spend that we've experienced before. So we'll keep an eye on it and make sure that we keep that up to date as we go through our collection periods.
So just the last note I wanted to make on here is just a couple lines that we see that really started increasing, is we don't have the past years, but our roof repairs in that line has gone from, I think we started out about 15,000 the first year we did it, now we're up to about $100,000 a year. So we're really starting to hit that, needing to do more preventative maintenance on the roofs. So that's one, again, as we talk about up in the bond and that money that we'll start spending on Shanahan and Olentangie High School. But we had a bid last winter for Liberty High School. We replaced the roof over the stage, we had considerable damage there as well. So some of, you know, some of the roofs, even though they are scheduled to be further out, they're out of warranty, we expect more life, but some go sooner than others, and others you expect, you know, 20 years might last 25. But we are really hitting that cycle on our roof repairs. We've had to make increases there, as well as our interior and exterior finishes. And again, that's replacing carpet. We've really started our first carpet replacements in the district, as well as, you know, again, the windows and the doors. So areas that you would expect as the buildings age, we'll start seeing those lines increase. So any questions? Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not done yet. Not done yet, not done yet. Yep. Forgot about the turf, stadium athletic funding. Mr. Bartz had asked a couple meetings ago, and I wasn't here the last meeting, so I apologize for that, our status of our turf funding. And on the sheet in front of you, the current stadium funding, Liberty High School is 214,000, Olentangie's 216, and Orange High School is 202,000. And just a reminder of this funding, it comes from a collection of gate receipts from each school, as well as our Pepsi contract. We get funding from Pepsi for that contract, that we move into those turf replacements equally for those buildings as well. The estimated future replacement, I reached out to both the Moats Group and the Mommy Bay Turf Company that did our original turf, and they gave us very significant cost difference in replacing the turf, which is interesting. What I think is most interesting about it is that we, when we put the turf in, they gave us about 325,000, I think 303,250.
Just going to bring that up.
Yeah, they thought to replace it. One, I think they're hedging their bets, because now I'm saying to them again, okay, we're looking five more years out, probably four to five years, what do you think's happening? And the 390, I definitely can see, given the increase in inflation, as well as construction costs that we're seeing on the buildings. I'm sure in turf, the same thing, they're hedging their bets. And we've really struggled with contractors in general, just finding good help and working on our projects. So I'm sure they're in the same boat, so I can see a natural increase on that. The 475 from Mommy Bay, I...
That's about what we paid to put it in with all the dirt.
Yeah.
See, I thought even when, but when we did the turf, we knew it wasn't going to be replaced for 10 years, the replacement cost had an inflation assumption in it. It wasn't replacing today's dollars, it was replacing 10-year dollars.
And that's what, yeah.
So inflate, this is, in my opinion, this change isn't inflation, it's probably margin.
Yes. And I can't explain why they bumped it up so much. I agree. It, I think it's significantly more it's going to cost. We have the drainage, everything's in, the drainage has worked well, and a lot of the drainage was in before we did this, it was already there, plus what we put in. So our, the fields, from drainage standpoint, have worked well. We've had some, where some of them have dipped, we've had to go in and fill that in. A lot of that is, you know, some of these fields were built on what used to be a woods. So when you get the wood in there, what's left of trees or stumps, sometimes that'll rot, and you get some of those depressions. So we fixed some of those, I don't think we've had any in a couple of years. But that's about the only thing we've had of that. couple of years. But that's about the only thing we've had of that. So our expectation is right now at least, we would only have to change the carpet on top, not, not do a lot of work underneath. So.
Now, what's the, how it, I mean, I stand on the sidelines. It looks good to me, but, but really, how, what's the condition?
Yeah, we have, we have an eight-year warranty on it and we have not, we've had them out for, there's been a tear here and there, and I said those depressions. But overall, it's holding up really well. I mean, I, right now, I don't have any expectations. We won't get 10 years. And they said 10 to 12, eight-year warranty, the 10 to 12-year life. I, right now, I feel like we'll get 10 unless we see significant wear on it over the next few years that we aren't seeing right now. You know, and the thing that the turf companies told us at the time as well is, I think both of them, it was a new mix. You know, you get a new product each time. So they said, well, our last products lasted 10 years. Well, we did this new mix. So you may get more than 12. We don't know, but we know we should be 10 to 12. So maybe we'll get lucky in those, those newer products because each generation of turf is supposed to last longer and so we'll see.
So we're year six?
Yeah.
This is year six?
We put it in, in the summer of 13.
You thought I would be able to remember that, given all.
Yeah, summer of 13. Yeah, Olentangie's went in the summer of, or the fall of 13.
Meetings were early, Kevin.
Yeah, so.
So about five. So, so if it's 10, so your formula seems if it's, if we're at five and we're going to try to get it to 10, your formula should be on pace.
We should be pretty close.
For the lower number of replacement. And then the question might be is you may have to go out and pick one vendor and get a group price to do all three. So someone may be out. You'll have to, you're going to have to competitively bid it anyways.
Right, right. Because when we did this, we didn't have to bid because the boost, each booster group put it in, donated it back. When we replace it, it would be replaced with district funds. And at that point, we'll have to do a bid. So the bid is likely, again, with all of them, unless we have one that looks brand new at the time, we're likely to replace all three when they, when they get to that point because the savings we get from doing all three at once, I'm sure will offset waiting a year to do one that we've all, let's get one more year of life out of them. So we'll have that to wait at the time. So we will have to bid that. And then at that point, we'll get a chance to kind of interview vendors and, and go through different, different avenues. The other option is if we find a vendor we like and they're in one of our purchasing co-ops, because again, we don't want to get the low bid turf that isn't quality, that's going to last us eight years because we did that. So if we find that, you know, we don't think we're getting a vendor that meets our specifications, or, you know, we settle on one that we just think is the best and it's, we can purchase through a co-op that's already done bidding or done that. We, that's another route. We could do it if there's a viable company there with that solution.
Berlin?
At Berlin, it was the Moats Group. And what we did there is because we did construction manager at risk, they could choose the vendor. They would get the vendor based on price. So we told them we wanted one of those two. We wanted to put the same turf in. We've had good luck with the turf we had. The prices at the time were some of the better prices out there. So we told them, get a bid from both, but we want to limit the, the turf vendors to these two so we're dealing with the same two companies. So.
And it looks like the replacement funds will be on track.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you believe your formula is still effective, how you're collecting the money and where you're accruing those funds from? Do you feel that?
Yes, I think we're on target.
You're on point with that.
If we, you know, just a quick math calculation in looking at being halfway there, the funds will be about 400,000 to 430,000 average for each of those high schools, which is about middle between the two bids that we've gotten so far or at this point, the estimation. So we're close. And it looks like we should be able to manage that through with the bid process to really maximize that cost for ourselves.
Good.
I should also mention some of that. I mentioned the Pepsi funds and the athletic funds. Also our turf rentals that we do. We have some booster rentals. They use it for a fundraiser, but we, any turf rentals that we do that are ongoing. So if a travel lacrosse club comes in, wants to have practice once a week, that's a turf rental that goes into the, into the replacement cost as well as our.
Rates that usage fees.
As well as our OYAA.
The outside organizations.
Rentals there also. So, that's there.
They're going to use it.
Setting up a similar fund for Berlin?
Yes.
With similar Pepsi money plus.
Yeah, we'd have to divide that out. And I would have to go back and check what'd be revisiting the Pepsi contract, I think, in the next couple of years, maybe three years. So that, at that point, that money could stay or go. I'm not counting on the beverage funds going forward. Every time we do a contract, there seems to be more things happening nationally with Pepsi and contracts with school districts. So every time we, we look at that contract, I don't count on getting as much money each time because it, we seem to get less and less.
Coke might be interested. You never know.
Then do we, do we know how the boosters are doing? I know Olentangie's paid off. Is Orange on track?
Orange has paid off.
Orange has paid off? That's good.
Do you think Liberty is the only one that still has a balance? Because they're still paying investors, I believe.
No, I believe Liberty just paid theirs off.
They just finished. I knew they were close, but.
Yeah. That part of the, they're going to be here on another project next month. And one of the things they will talk about then is that they have paid that off.
Yeah, we're, we're great. The booster clubs did a great job.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate that update. Thank you, Emily.
Okay, we have some board action items this evening. The first one.
All the lights.
The first one is we need to assign a president pro tem for our 2019 organizational meeting.
I nominate Dave King. Thank you.
Second. Sorry.
I'm sorry, who is the?
Me, second.
Okay, thank you.
She first.
Should we vote on these individually? Okay. Each of these things?
Well, you could, well, this.
Okay, do you want?
Yeah, so, so we're going to do board action. I'm going to ask you to pull out B and C.
Oh, wait, we have to, we have to vote.
You have to, you have to present it.
Right, but do we vote?
Present it.
But we have to vote on the president.
You have to vote on A. So you're going to pull out B and C.
Yeah.
And you'll vote on A. So we're only voting on A, right?
Yep.
Just separate all three.
Yep.
Correct. So you have a first and a second.
Pro tem versus pro se?
No, I already opened that can of worms. I'm not going back in it.
It's pro tem, by the way.
Yeah.
It was sinet, sinet dia last last year.
Yes, that's when we.
Too much Latin. We didn't do Latin in Galleon, in Galleon Senior High School.
So I will take role for item A.
So Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so since we're taking separately, well, we could put the, do you want the tips each separate or?
No, you can put them together.
All right. So now I need a motion to approve board action items B and C, our TIF agreements.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Heffell, call the roll.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Before I vote, I do want to tell the developers and Mr. Lamb, Mr. Bodnar, I'm not against your development. I'm not against the revenue. My concern has always been, as you know, Mr. Lamb, from these presentations, is the strain on traffic. So you're going to develop. We're going to put in, we're not putting in houses, but we're putting in companies. And some of those people may live in the district. Many probably will not. But what we're creating are, are expanded roadways. We're eventually going to connect to the Big Walnut 71 connector. I mean, don't get me wrong, I love the South Old State, but eventually we're going to, we're going to push that widening project in all different directions. We're going to go overpasses and underpasses. And the people that are going to be in those businesses will find with their logistics, the shortest route from A to B. And that will be on these expanded roads, which are going to come through where our people live, our residents and our taxpayers live. So I'm not against it. In fact, all revenue is good revenue. But at some point in 20 years, Mr. Lamb, you're going to be somewhere else and you folks will be living in the Bahamas and whatever that happens. The people that are going to be at the end of this TIF are going to be, are going to be with these widened roads and the trucks will roll. At some point, I just feel there has to be a voice that says, appreciate it, but someone's got to put a, got to put a stake in the ground for the expanded traffic. So I'm a no.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Heffell, would you please present your treasurer action items?
Yes, please. I would like to present treasurer action items A through E for approval, please.
So moved.
A second.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray, here's superintendent items.
Yes, I'll, is there anything to pull out? No, anything? Then I'll present superintendent action items A through E for approval.
I'll move.
Second.
So I'm sorry, that was Mr. King for first?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Bart's second.
Thank you. So Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes. And when I saw that C was on the agenda and Zachary Harrison was graduating early, then everybody knew he's going to commit next week. So.
There'll be no ceremony.
No ceremony. Just going to tweet it out and fax it in.
Yeah, that's the way to do it.
But until I saw it, I wasn't sure he would be enrolling early. Good luck to him.
Yeah, good luck.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes. I'll now request a motion that the board move into executive session pursuant to ORC 122.2 and to consider a complaint against public employees and for, for a matter required to be kept confidential by state or federal law. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you, Dave. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
We'll now move to executive session and return only to convene or no, to adjourn.
Sinet dia.
To adjourn.
All right, where are we?
Thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you for coming.
Where are we going, Ms. Ray? Right here, the Liberty Room.
Oh, is it, are they in?
There you go.
Okay, I would like to present a resolution. Whereas the Board of Education held an appeal hearing on today, December 13th, 2018, in complaint 2018-002. Whereas the Board of Education